Okay, welcome everybody. We will call the meeting to order and start with our Fudge of Allegiance. It's Dr. Moffett's turn to lead us.
Fudge of Allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fred? All right. The next item on our agenda is to make a presentation to the Charter Revision Commission. So I lied to you, I actually did have you up first.
Right.
I think what we'll do is have you all come up at once. We got you. Black, thank you for your service. Just briefly, I've said this a number of times, you know how much we think of you and how grateful we are for the work that you did. Many months, many hours, decisions. We're grateful for your guys' willingness to do it. So, thank you. I will also read the inscription.
Well, I might read the inscription.
All right. It says, "In recognition of your commitment, dedication, and invaluable contributions to the review and revision of the Town of Granby Charter, thank you for your service and your commitment to the betterment of our town." 2023. So we have one for each of you. Let's take a quick break and have you guys come up and we'll take a pic. Anybody want to say anything?
All right. Let's get some pictures. You guys come down.
Just let me go.
Oh, yes, of course.
Oh, it's very impressive. Some people never change.
Charter.
Does it have a name?
Yes.
I think that's the right one.
I think it's the last one.
Thank you.
Thank you. And don't leave because we have a box you can put it back in.
Yes, there's a box.
So, so let's get everybody organized and however we're gonna. You're in your own back row. Everybody in the rows who want to.
Everybody in one row.
You're smart. You're talking.
I'm talking. What's up?
Listen, if you're here, we're all promoting.
Why don't we get one with just the charter fee?
Yeah.
That's dangerous. No work with us.
Yeah, no work with Scott.
I don't see anything to you.
So, charge this. He's standing on a 15-year-old chair.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, you don't need one of those, right? That's probably good.
That's fine.
That's good.
All right. Tony, well, empty your boxes. Do you reckon the state put discussion on the capital budget? If not, will they?
Charlie.
How you doing? Uh, it's gonna be real interesting. How you doing? You too? Hey, that's a stick. Go ahead. You have a stick. You're always. Of course. Good to see you.
All right. See you.
See you.
All right. Thank you again. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of February 5th.
Move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Select on February 5th?
A second.
Okay. Any questions or comments, suggested revisions? Peggy, thank you for joining us. Don't let me leave you out. Speak up if you have anything.
Okay, I will.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody? Sorry. Anybody post? All right. The next item on our agenda is appointments. I don't think we have any tonight. I do think we have at least two folks now interested in the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook. So, look for us to bring something forward there at some point. Next item on our agenda is old business. We don't have any old business, so we'll move on to our new business. And the first item is a presentation from Michael Casellas?
Casellas.
Casellas. All right, come on up. Appreciate you being here tonight. We, you can tell us anything you want. Mainly what we're looking for is just remind us, you know, the services you're providing and that you have any recommendations on how we might more efficiently utilize those services. That's what we're looking to hear. Take it away.
So, I'm Mike Casellas. I'm the Executive Director of the Visiting Nurse and Hospice of Litchfield County. And thank you, Selectmen, for inviting me tonight. It's an honor to be here. So, Visiting Nurse and Hospice of Litchfield County was formed through the mergers of Foothills Visiting Nurse in Winstead, VNA Northwest in Bantam, Salisbury Visiting Nurse in Salisbury, Connecticut, and most recently, this past October, with the Farmington Valley Visiting Nurse Agency in Simsbury, which covers Granby and Serrano Towns. I'm not unfamiliar with Granby and this area. Actually, I started my home care career here about 20 years ago, right at the Farmington Valley VNA. And I was their CFO. The plan was to actually merge the Farmington Valley VNA with Foothills and Winstead. That was the plan. It'd come to fruition, but 20 years later, things came full circle and we decided to make that merger. Home care has become a business as of late, as of, you know, a lot of businesses have and smaller types of. Let me go back a little bit. So, we're all, all the agencies that merged in were Medicare-certified, state-licensed, not-for-profit VNA's, serving their respective communities for over 100 years. So, we have a lot of history in the towns that we care for the residents in, and it just made sense for all of us to get together. Costs continue to increase. Competition is fierce amongst hospital systems and for-profit organizations and the prevalence of man. Insurances who don't pay as much as our full costs to provide that care to patients. So, what we do is we send nurses, physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech therapists, social workers, home health aides, out to people in their homes, assisted livings, nursing facilities, whatever they call home, after-stays in hospitals and things like that. Our services are meant to be short-term in nature. Average person that we have on service usually is about less than 40 days. For the Town of Granby, so we provide home care, we provide hospice, we provide community services. And the Town of Granby supports us with an allocation every year, and we're very grateful for that. Some statistics that we do for the Town of Granby, we provide blood pressure and blood sugar screenings done at the Y M C A. This past year, we provided 737 blood pressure screenings and 99 blood sugar screenings. Each fall, we provide flu vaccines. We provide those at the Granby Senior Center. There was two this year, and also at the Granby Board of Ed. 250 people were immunized this year. Community activities. We also do CPR training, and we do that, the Granby Recreation Department. And this year, with 28 participants, were certified in CPR. Our home care services, this past year, we serviced 120 patients in the Town of Granby and provided 2,330 Care of the Sick visits and also additional 60 wellness visits for people who were off of service and didn't provide, those services are not provided by their insurance. We also do the school nursing for the Town of Granby. Been doing that for probably about 25 years now. We met with the superintendent and the business manager recently, and we provided them a new three-year contract, which goes through school years 24 through 26. And we hope to continue providing those services to the school. We also have the Granby Food Bank, right here on 248 Salmon Brook Street, which is open twice a week. This past year, 824 visits were made and 1,800 bags of groceries were provided to those individuals. So, Granby, we cover all of Litchfield County and the Farmington Valley. Provide services to 62 different zip codes and other town that we provide as many services to than the Town of Granby. So, Granby is a very important town to us, and what we'd like is continue the services here. I know we just had a merger, and sometimes people get nervous about a merger, but I could tell you that we want to make it as seamless as possible and grow the amount of services that we do to the town and the residents of the town. And anytime you need anything from us, you know, we'll always be around. And the office in Simsbury will continue to remain there. And we're actually looking to hire more nurses and more staff to care for residents in this area. So, that's my presentation. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Peggy, we'll start with you. You have any?
Questions? I appreciate hearing about all of the food services that the VNA has provided to Granby residents, and thank you for coming up tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming up. So, but the goal is to also keep the food bank.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, just curious, you mentioned that Granby has, seems to have more services than maybe some of the other areas that you work with. Are you looking to expand some of the services that you have here in other areas, or how are you thinking about it as you bring the different groups together?
Well, if there's opportunities in other towns, we certainly look at that. So, you know, it just happens that, you know, Granby has a food bank, which is unique, and it's the only town that we do school nursing in as well. So, it's unique in both those areas. As far as the other services that we provide, we provide most of those other services in other towns as well.
Yeah, thank you for coming, Michael. I don't have any questions. I do appreciate the presentation, and our constituents often ask us to make sure we're looking for opportunities to regionalize and take advantage of those kind of regional services, and your group is another great example. If we had to try to provide the same level of services directly without your help, the cost would be substantial.
So, we're grateful for the work you're doing. Thank you for that.
I will warn you that at last, I'm gonna let Sandy go. But, go ahead.
I'd like to say, thank you for looking into merging with other groups. I know how your costs keep going up each year, and I appreciate the fact that you're still in Granby, supporting our citizens and our food bank.
Thank you.
You disagree with anything, Sandy? You want to grill him at all?
Yeah, are you ready?
Sure.
I am the Director for Human Services, so I run the Senior Center.
Oh, good.
And, yeah, so we host your nurses every Thursday. So, thank you for the services. I am very happy that you are continuing with all of the services that you've been providing in the past. So, I appreciate it, and I do look forward to having another conversation.
Good, thank you. Give me a call anytime. If you could think of anything else that the seniors can utilize, just let us know.
Oh, I'll be in touch.
That's good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you all, and thank you for, anytime you want me to come back, more than happy to.
You got it. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a conclusion of the Charter Revision Commission. Besides honoring them and thanking them for their service, I think it's appropriate, Scott might even say necessary, that we're not gonna better term decommission them. A good memo that just summarizes the process again they went through, the result was a proposed motion to set them on their way until 10 years from now. We need them to get back together. So, anybody have any questions about it? If not, I would accept the proposed motion.
I'll make a motion, be it resolved, that the Granby Board of Select hereby dissolve the 2022 Granby Charter Revision Commission, and thanks to the Charter Revision Commission for their commitment, dedication, and invaluable contribution to the review and revision of the Granby Charter, for their services and commitment, and to the betterment of the Town of Granby.
Second the motion.
All right. We need discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody post? All right. Thank you. All right. So, the next item on our agenda is discussion of possible action regarding the draft capital improvement program for 2025 through 2034. There's a memo in the backup that kind of sets this out, but I do want to take a minute and focus on the memo a little bit, because this is a little bit of a departure from what we would normally do. I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing, why we're doing it, and to the extent that we know it, what we expect the next steps to be. So, over the past 30 days or so, I'm very grateful for our team. As I've told you a number of times, I asked them to do something a little bit different, which is to not only include in the draft capital program that they would normally include in terms of known needs for the next 10 years, but to dig a little deeper and try to come up with as comprehensive a list as they could of things that they thought should be considered over the next 10 years. We did that without regard for a source of funding and without regard to a cost, because the goal was to try to get as comprehensive a list in one place as a starting point as we could. So, for everybody who thinks I'm losing my mind, that there's a reason we did it. I may very well be losing my mind, but there is a reason we did it, and that was the primary reason. And so, when you do that, you will see that some of the items on this would not normally fit in the parameters of what we would put in a small capital improvement program. We know that going in, we know it's sitting here tonight. That was purposeful. There's repeating. The costs shown in here for many of these items are just estimates. That's the world we work in today. They're our best guesses we sit here. And of course, the further you go out in terms of when you think you're gonna need to do the project, the less confidence you can have in the estimates. But they're numbers that we can start with, and we can start the vetting process as we select which projects we're gonna move forward with, in what order. We obviously have to drill those numbers down much better than they are today. You will see in the last column, there's a, next to the last column, it says Funding Source. Please don't attach any particular meaning to that. It's just a starting point, just a fill in a blanks or anything. That's just for preliminary discussion purposes. Many of these items on this list, as I know you've started to go through it, you've recognized we don't have a identified funding source for. That's the point, is to try to figure out how we're gonna get from where we are today to where we need to be. And then, as we discussed before, the other main thing to understand is that for all purposes, this doesn't include any of our IT needs. That's because there's a separate list being developed for that. Our IT team is doing a full inventory of our IT equipment, analyzing where it's at in its normal useful life, where it's at in terms of its warranties, and also developing what we might need in terms of new equipment that the teams are asking us to consider. The hope would be that, as we have, you know, we've already identified, and that is part of our ARCA spending, the hope is to include many of those objects as we can, and it makes sense to do in our ARCA planning. So, that list is forthcoming. I know they're working on it, because Tristan, our IT guy, was in the office today. I humored him by telling him, I think he asked me some question about the computer in the town manager's office. I'm there, turn the dark thing on. I'm working on it, and we should have something in the next, hopefully, 30 days or so. So, I'm open-minded to what we do next, but as I gave this more thought, what I thought we would do, if you want to go line through line, you can, or we can just sort of focus on anything that you have particular questions about, or that you have any particular opinions about. And I think between Kenny and I and Scott, we're gonna take really good notes. We have to, between now and March 4th, when we present the budget to the Board of Select, we have to get this back down to a capital, a short-term capital list. So, we will have to take certain items off this list, or we probably should take certain items off this list. And the way I have tried to contemplate it in the discussing with Kenny and the team is that it's really probably three lists. It's the capital improvement list, which we call the short-term. Moving stuff to a longer-term list, where we need to start thinking about getting C-TAC together and considering that. There's probably a third list of projects that don't really fit in either one, that are gonna need to go on a better find grant funding for if you want to. So, our hope tonight, unless you want to do it differently, is to get as much information as we can, because this is really only the first step, to prepare Kenny and I and the team to get the budget ready for March 4th. This is only the first time you'll see it. Of course, you'll see it again in the budget report, and as this list develops, we're gonna have to work through that together. So, let's start with, does anybody have any questions about the thoughts behind why we did the list? If not, do you want to, is, do you want, do you want to go through it line by line?
I'll raise my hand and say, no, thank you. I wouldn't like to go through it line by line. I could ask a general question or two.
So, let's do this. We'll start with you. We'll go around, we'll ask a million questions and/or comments. And then, we'll come back through at least one more time. Okay? So, you don't feel compelled to think of everything your first time. Go ahead.
On the, I'll start off right at the top, the road maintenance. I know that the, in the recent past, that increased the amount of funding we're putting into road maintenance with the intent of bringing up the overall grade of Granby's roads. And I wanted to, I guess, understand with this particular table, whether or not we're still supporting that desire to increase the amount we're spending on road maintenances in a, I think a LOSIP fund, or, sorry, a fund, in order to save the town money long-term rebuilding roads.
All right. So, let's go there, and I think if you guys are okay, what we're gonna do is I'm gonna try to answer, because I'm testing my own knowledge of whether I know the answers, but you experts need to step in if I get it wrong. Is that cool with everybody? So, I think the answer to your question mark is, that is flat from last year, but it maintains the increase we made last year into roadway maintenance, with the goal being exactly what you said, to be able to do more roadway work each year to keep ahead of it, to avoid more expensive costs down the road. Can that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Was that an accurate answer?
That's accurate.
Okay. I'm one for one. Next question.
Next question. I know that we have Kirk Bobby in place for two additional bridges, I believe. I was just wondering, based on our bridge assessment, whether any of the bridges that are longer-term here need to be pulled up and addressed earlier than their current schedule?
I wouldn't even gonna try. Kirk?
Okay, so we, I'm reaching out to the state right now. I'm trying to get one of the bridges on the state and local program, and then there's potentially five others that will fall under the federal state program. But, they will be 100% reimbursed. Not that we don't have to come up with some money to cover the cost, but ultimately, they'll be 100%. I'm reaching out to see what I can get done now.
I like that 100% answer.
I do too.
I'll finish off with saying that for the equipment lists, the seaford vehicles, graders, lawnmowers, and by that, I mean the large lawnmowers for down at Salmon Brook. I believe that the schedule we have laid out accounts for regular depreciation, but you never know during a single storm when a truck's gonna fail. Do we have flexibility in that section of the capital budget to account for a earlier-than-needed major equipment purchase?
I'll try that one. Not a lot. That's how tight these budgets are, and have always been. So, they do a tremendous job with what we give them to do, but we don't have a lot of flexibility for emergencies or unplanned needs.
We have money in our, in our budget for emergency repairs. Is it tight? Yes, it is very tight. We have to take out for money. Currently, we have a truck right now that's in a bit of distress. Thankfully, we have something that can fill its space for a little while. And it used to be you could get a truck in eight, nine months, and we're, if you remember, the ambulance was saying their problems, fire department. We're over a year now to get a truck. So, an emergency, jump something up really quick, it's pretty challenging to do it. Does it totally answer your question? I don't think. But, we're getting some longevity out of our equipment because of the way we spec. Where years ago, you were looking to get 10 years out of a truck, trade it in and get the best value you could, and we're working 12 to 15 years now. 15, being very optimistically. Okay? But, we are working on a plan. So, like I said, we can get longevity, we can get cost savings, and if we had to replace something right off the bat, we don't have the money built into the budget, but in inventory, we will be okay. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I'll stop asking questions now.
Keep on writing down, we'll get back to you. Kelly?
Actually, Mark had my questions. So, I think the only other thing that I was thinking of that might be helpful is if we had these kind of sorted by funding source, so that we knew, you know, what we thought we could get bonding money for, what's coming out of one of the existing funds versus what we'd be looking at from a general fund perspective. So, that way, we can look, as we go through it, we can, you know, figure out what needs to be cut to get to, you know, the numbers we need to get to for next year.
You mean the ones that remain on the short-term?
On the short-term list, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, to sort it by funding source.
Okay. Good. Fred?
I mean, I didn't go through each line by line. Am I right to look at that we're, for the Board of Ed, we're gonna be purchasing a bus? Or we already purchased a bus, or no?
Not my account.
I know.
I don't know that.
Yeah, we're going to, any of the Board of Ed questions, we're going to have to defer to them. So I don't think this, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I know this is their standard list that they give us every year. So they get a set amount of what, they didn't do what I asked our team to do, which is to go beyond what they normally look at. That's accurate, right?
Well, they, 2025, now from their plus one funding. So that's what they're, we must think from their plus one.
All right.
So I don't even want to speculate, but when I was on the Board of Ed, there was a regular replacement schedule for us. So I'm, you know, I didn't want to guess, I'm going to guess that that's what that is, that there's a regular replacement.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, so for the buses, it's same as our capital equipment. So they purchase one or two buses each year, and then we lease them. So it's a financial, it's a total ghost, the first row, anything before the furniture fixture and equipment is actually the lease payment.
Okay.
And then under the technology, all of them is also lease payment. So the actual cash is only the furniture, fixture, equipment, and the building maintenance. The rest of it is all.
Thank you.
Done for first round?
Sure.
Peggy?
Mark, I think you forgot me.
No, I just said Peggy.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Sorry. You're up first one.
First round.
First one.
So my only comment is that I think this was a valuable exercise. I think we all understand that we're not going to be able to do everything that we want to do, when you want to do it. And it would be helpful if we could kind of prioritize what's the most important things on the list versus things that might be able to wait a while. And also, as Kelly said, it would be helpful to explore other funding sources and having a list like this maybe will be helpful in trying to figure out if we can find some other sources like grant money to fund some of these items.
Okay. You done for the first round?
I am.
Okay, so for my first round, I don't have any questions because I've appreciated that the team has already spent hours with me answering my questions. Just a few things that I will point out from my notes so far that I think are self-explanatory, but they, that's a very good segue from what Peggy just said. Again, the value of this list is that we have a one starting point with what we think we know our needs are, so we can start to assess them. Do get asked this question quite frequently, and I kind of want to repeat it, but we are always looking for funding sources, whether they're on this list and they're shown as part of our capital expenditures or. We are always, and it's something I think we can improve on and will improve on, we're working on a plan on how to do that, that we're always looking for ways to take advantage of grant funding that is otherwise available to us. And there's no question that there are certain things on this list that without grant funding, we probably can't do it all. And there are certain things on this list that without grant funding may be put further back in the planning process than we want to do them because of the limited resources we're going to have to balance. I will also say this, though, no matter how you strike this out, I hope the few taxpayers who are listening or watch later, take the time to understand this and get involved and ask questions. The first couple of years of this plan are going to be extremely difficult, beyond what we normally would see. Some of that is just, we should have predicted its coming, like the police cruisers, for example. We didn't buy any last year. So this year, we're going to have to step that up a little bit. There's nothing we can do about it. You got to replace those police cruisers. Some of it, like the emergency communication system, we are moving forward. We've made a commitment to our first responders and to our community that we're going to do it. We have multiple grants, applications pending that we are going to push through. But we have to assume the worst-case scenario. If we're going to issue that contract to get started this year, we have to commit that we'll spend the money if we have to spend the money. You'll see that plugged in as $4.2 million in the first year. I don't know how we take it out of the first year. We have to commit to it if we want to sign a contract. And so there's, there's no, I just, we need to work together as a community, getting through these projects and figuring out and when to get them done, like we do on so many other things. This is a community-wide project that we're going to have to work together on. And just another highlight, my way of example. So there are designated contributions to our ambulance service to assist them in the purchase of ambulances. They need two ambulances in plus or minus the next five or six years. And so we didn't necessarily commit to the numbers that are put in here, but we committed to working with them on that, and it's something that we need to live up to. So so there are a lot of challenges in here and a lot of things we're going to have to work our way through. If you look carefully at it, and I've been trying to find it on here, I can, doesn't really matter where it's on here. Now, then you, there are absolutely things on this list that the community should be discussing that don't fall into you have to have category. The best one I can think of is there is a line item here in somewhere into expanding our library building to provide more services to the community. You will remember that we committed ARPA funds to do a space planner. They're working on that. We should have some of their reports back to us soon. The team that, I'm sure you've seen through the various different channels, communication channels, the library board and Amber and her team is working on a strategic plan and is inviting public input into that. They've made no secret on the fact that they think we need to reinvest in our libraries because the community is changing. But that's a, I think the project is shown here as $4 million because there's a $2 million, up to a $2 million state matching grant you can get. So this thing the community needs to be talking about and needs to support. We're going to expand our library without the community being willing to say they want to pay for it and to borrow the money to do it. That's why it's on this list. I hope nobody going forward here will assess any other motive to that, other than we're doing what we, I think our job is and what we promised to do, which is to start with a list that the community deserves to vet and should be vetted. So that's my first round. I don't have any other questions, I don't think. Time for second round. Mark?
I know with the capital projects that we had at the high school that covered roofs and I don't believe in air conditioning yet, oh, sorry, HV. But was there other activities that the Board of Ed was looking to do at the high schools that weren't covered in the capital project?
Yes, good question. And yes, I can give you an update on that. So the, they're working to try to close out the roof project that they did this summer. That project came in under budget in terms of, remember, the voters approved transferring a certain amount of money from bridges that we didn't need to school project the roof. There is money left over. We spent less money on the roof than the voters approved to go over there. We're trying to firm up what those numbers are. They have a, they are going to have a capital need that is almost imminent. The boilers in the middle school are 10 years beyond their useful life. They're approaching 30 years old. They're going to need to replace the boilers in the middle school. It's a massive project. I have made it clear, I think, to our building committee and to the superintendent, she agrees, that that is an item we're going to bring before the Board of Selectment, is the potential use for that extra funding that they didn't spend on the roof is to spend it on boilers, but we're not going to do that without more information about the exact cost on the boilers and the finalized numbers on the roof. So to the best of my knowledge, there are no other capital project, they have huge capital needs of their own, as I understand it. I think they've discussed it publicly. There's security upgrades they think are necessary to our school system. So, but none of those are being contemplated in what the voters approved then using on the roof. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yes, it gives me additional information I was looking for on the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Okay. So for the public, this is only a portion of the challenges. When we combine the Board of Ed's list with our list, there's a lot of work to do. Not easy work, but it's got to be done. So. Hold it.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
Now, I was just thinking, as we go through and look at the items on here and prioritize them, we may want to take a look at what we have on the ARPA list to see if the items on there are still a higher priority, or do we swap some of the items that are on the list here for the ARPA list and try to cover some of the funding there?
So Fred, before you go, I want to respond.
Yeah, the squatter.
Yeah, so very good point. We're already doing that, obviously. So you'll see from the ARPA report, most of those projects are done and they have, we've committed to them, committed funding to them, and they're working towards completion. The two big ones left are the third phase of the IT and the HVAC for the town hall complex. The team is working very hard to try to get hot numbers we can be confident on in both of those in the next 30 to 45 days. So then we can make an educated decision. We're going to complete the IT project, and here's what it will cost us. We're not going to complete the HVAC. We knew that from the very beginning, that every building in the, in the complex needs HVAC work. We're going to prioritize them in order that they need to be done, and then we make a decision there. Then depending on where those two numbers come in, and in particular, depending on what we go forward on the HVAC, there's not enough money in all of the remaining ARPA funds to do all of the HVAC, right? So there's going to be a decision point. See some money there that we, and that was the goal, was to be ready in the next 30 to 45 days to finalize commitments on HVAC and IT, to see what is left over, to then start using that here and elsewhere. So, but again, I don't, you know, a list is a list. But I want to compliment the team for doing what we asked them to do. This is a very comprehensive list. So for example, you will find on there that the Town Center Committee has been meeting there, I believe there, we will ultimately reach a consensus that once we get enough public input to have sort of a vision, that we need to bring in outside help to actually develop a master plan, implement a master plan. That cost is in here. So that might be something we spend our money. Might be, you know, there's something, so we're doing exactly what you said we're doing, we should do. So, yep.
No, it's, like you said, it's a very exhaustive list. I do, you said not to put too much weight on the funding sources, but I like how that, when you have this Salmon Brook Park stuff, that some of it lists recreation fund, because I know that, you know, would be directly applied there. So that's all.
Okay. Peggy?
It just occurs to me as we're talking that, you know, we're trying to predict the future, which none of us is capable of doing, and this list shouldn't be viewed as being static. There will be changes and other needs will become apparent as the years go on. So, and I think it's intended to be flexible and needs to be flexible.
Okay.
And that's it.
One final round on the board?
So we have the capital program priority advisory committee available for larger projects, act as a vetting tool before we develop any bond packages. We're going to kick off a meeting of that group anytime soon?
So I think that is, I think that's up for us to discussion, but I definitely support to. We're not quite ready to do that yet. As I see it, the next step is the team will go back, because we have to have something ready for the budget. We'll go back and I think the lull hanging fruit for us, you guys step in and disagree if you disagree, is to pick out those projects. There's at least a few on here that are obviously large-cap projects. Pull them off this list, put them on the CPAC list, okay? And then also, there's probably, maybe, there's probably a few on here that are not large-cap and not small-cap, because they don't even fit the definition of either one that we would pull off and put on the third list. Make sure we don't lose sight of it. And then, and then focus, because we have to, to get through the budget, focus on finalizing the capital improvement plan, which will be bigger than, it will be bigger than the allocation we are currently getting, but the projects will stay on the list. We'll have a decision point through the budget process, what are we prioritizing the first year? And then the rest of the stuff can probably stay on here, but it might move. And then we will build a list to get CPAC kicked off. I strongly support getting CPAC kicked off, but it requires us to make sure that the Board of Ed is in roughly the same position as us, so that they have their list of capital projects, so that there's, that that work is useful. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
I think that's where we go from here is, when is our drop dead deadline, Kenny, for you and I to be ready to insert these pages in the budget book?
By this week?
This week? Okay. So you guys have tomorrow to email any particular thoughts that you have in terms of, ask yourself, any thoughts, just send us any thoughts. Our goal is going to be to take all the thoughts, and then we'll, we'll pare this list back down and do what I just said. We'll move the stuff that's obviously large-cap off. We'll move the stuff that is obviously falling somewhere in the middle off, and we'll focus on this first year. What do we really want to get in front of the voters in this first year, because it has to be done in the first year, or we're recommending it be done in the first year? And then the rest of the years will just flow and they'll stay where they are, so that there's an ongoing discussion. Everybody okay with that process?
Yes.
Yes.
Peggy? Yes or no? Are you okay with that process?
Yes, I'm fine with that process.
Okay. Fred?
Yes.
All right. Anybody on the team want to add anything?
No, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is land use commissioner training requirement. This is self-explanatory. Don't ask, I'll answer the question I expect that you ask. Why did you put this in front of us? Because the statute requires us adding it in front of us. There's no action necessary. It's just a report on who has taken the required trainings. Anybody have any question about that or want more information on it? Give them a second if the lawyer is here. Okay. Here you go. Next item on the agenda is our statement of accounts in the ARPA report. So Kenny passed out a slightly revised ARPA report. You guys have this statement of accounts? Anybody have any questions, concerns? Go on once. Go on twice. Kenny, anything you want us to specific, you want to specifically point out?
We did get the $10,500 from the Secretary of the State to support the early building project.
Really?
Yeah.
Who's going to tell me that?
I just told them.
Look at him. He's a glory.
All righty. That's good news.
So, so when, when, when the time clock and the register figure out how to spend the money, they will come back to the board for, for the, for the allocation.
That's recent, right?
That's recent, yes.
All right. No questions, comments? All right. First selectmen report, I don't have anything that's working. So we'll, Peggy, we'll start reviewing.
Um, I have nothing to report, thank you.
All right. Fred?
Nothing for me.
Kelly?
Nothing.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Ben, you're up.
All right. All right, so currently, the, on the sports front, ever, the basketball teams are starting their state tournament. So Chaz has his first game tomorrow night against Stafford. Both teams did very well in their seasons and then were very gratefully, we had a nice day off today. So that was very well appreciated. For juniors, we have, on Friday, we are having SAT practice, is that the test, the state mandatory test is around the corner, and also for colleges. And then also the College and Career Center has recently been working with seniors on getting college scholarships and then, of course, working through the ever complicated college admissions process. The empty bowls is April 26th. So that is the date for the empty bowls event for NHS, where we'll be having food in the high school where you buy a bowl and your donations will go help.
Do you know the time?
No, I do not. I will, I can bring that when I learn of it. I think it's, it's still in the process of being built up.
Thank you.
And that is practically all that's happening in the high school right now.
So I have a question for you. Did, did Chaz tell you that when he talked to you into coming in that he wasn't going to stop showing up and you'd have to do all the work as well?
I don't know.
Anybody have any questions for Ben? We'll move to the public session. Does anybody in the public have any comments or questions? Good? All right. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, seeing no one, we do need to have a brief executive session for a personnel and collective bargaining meeting. So I would accept the motion to take a, Peggy, we can call you?
Um, yeah, just call myself, that'll be fine.
Okay. Need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all of us, a favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, good night, everybody. Go into the executive session, just here in the room is good.